Let's call this meeting to order. Angie, could you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Bunty.
Present.
Commissioner Lemberman.
Here.
Commissioner Murphy.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey and Smith are in Florida.
Okay, we just barely have a quorum. So, uh, next, John, could you give us the prayer tonight?
Heavenly Father, we ask that you would bless this meeting and that we would work out this agenda in the best interests of the taxpayers of Gresham County. In Christ's name, amen.
Amen, and let's keep in mind the brave people in the Ukraine. Stand for the pledge.
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands by our nation under God, in the mission with liberty and justice for all.
Born and unborn. All right. Anyone have any additions to the agenda? I didn't hear of any. Then we're looking for a motion to approve the agenda.
So, a second.
A motion by Commissioner Bunty, second by Commissioner Lemberman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay? Motion passed. Public comment. Please step forward to the, that's where the mic is, I guess.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners. I'd like to, I have three other points I'd like to make. The first one, I've been on the planning commission since 2011. And my, I live in Pine River Township. My personal experience with a wind turbine on my property in Pine River Township, it only took two years to get my field tile repaired, and I had to do it myself. I still have only eighty percent of what I had when I started. My neighbors have the same problem, and they've had to fix their own, too. And that's not part of the deal we had with them. For the last two years, I've been complaining about a sound that the turbine makes. Excuse me, but it goes, sounds like this. Our, our, it's only been two years now, they're all doing it in Pine River, as far as I know right now. Pine River Coal and Polaris. I'm not sure about Polaris, but I am sure about Coal and, and Pine River. Now, GE finally, after two years, has finally agreed that there's a problem. And the problem is a lubrication problem. And GE is working on it. Unfortunately, their GE is going to cover it for DTE under warranty. Under, that's about a hundred and fifty turbines, so, to take care of, to be resolved. The, um, the sound that the turbine makes, mine is about two hundred and fifty feet away from my house, okay? When it's going at maximum RPM, it sounds like a low-level jet flying overhead, okay? When it slows down to about half-speed, it sounds like another jet higher up flying over. Makes more noise than the trees, okay? So, that part about the refrigerator deal, that's, that's out, okay? That's long gone. That ship has, has sailed. And now, now the thing starts to clunk. It's making a clunking sound, it's annoying. So, the point, the planning, that's, that's my personal experience, okay? That's where I live. The second point is the planning commission approved a special use permit for Heartland last week. It's just clear the planning commits, planning commission accepts all information furnished by Inven Energy and Spicer Group without question. That includes the sound studies. Except me, I didn't. I didn't vote for it. They're furnishing you with copies of a sound study, of parts of a forty-page sound study. This is the third sound study that was done on the same turbine, same two turbines, actually. And if you look at the second, third, and fourth pages, you'll see very faint lines, and I don't know why it's so faint, they must have run out of ink. But you see that that goes way up, clear up to seventy decimals. On page forty goes, and they see how many times across the chart, how many times. And on page forty-two, you can really see how clearly, how vivid it is, that it's way over the sound, sound limit, okay? Now, uh, I don't feel that the ordinances we have on the books are protecting homeowners. A thousand feet is not enough. I'm twelve, twelve-hundred, and it's loud.
Twelve-hundred feet from the turbine?
Yeah, from the turbine. Since, since we started with BB down there, which was a nice little turbine down there, they've doubled the size. And they're, and they're increasing it every time we do a wind project. They increase the size of the, of the blades and the turbine generating capacity with the same ordinances, with the same sound and distance from the houses. And we got people that are hurting because of this, and they're too close. My final point is this. There is a complaint process that people have filed with the county, and they have no response from the county. And they've had sufficient time to reply to the complaints, okay? So, the, would you please, as the commissioners, would you please look into that and see where these complaints are and what the status of that is, and, and get back with the planning commission? I'd appreciate it.
Your next planning commission meeting?
April fifth.
And you're on planning commission for Pine River Township?
Pardon?
For Pine River Township.
County.
What the county?
Township, Shuren County.
Okay. Does the complaint process go through?
Goes to the county.
Who, who at the county?
I, I don't know. I know I sent mine to Pine River Town, I sent one, and I've never heard anything either.
Okay.
You send them into the, you send them into the township.
You sent a complaint to Pine River Township?
I did, I sent my own personal one, because I'm not, that's not one of the townships. But the people in the southern townships have made complaints, half a dozen of them are sold, and they, they never hear anything from them, so. The complaint process is not working.
I have a couple of questions, I have actually more than that for you. One of them is, who was the electric, what, who is buying your, uh, who's buying electricity?
Consumers.
Consumers?
On, on the new Heartland project, yeah.
Where you're at, like your home, is consumers?
In my home, DTE.
DTE?
Yeah.
And we have someone from DTE here tonight. Are you aware of this?
No, they're not with DTE.
Oh, you're not with DT?
Not with DT, no.
There.
Wind energy, okay, I'm sorry. Is there, do you know any steps that he could be taking, that he might not be taking?
Certainly addresses, if you would like to see.
I think the thing to do is to increase this distance from the houses by like double, maybe, and also from non-participating property owners, it needs to be greater.
She would like to address some of this for you.
I know, we know each other.
Well, you know each other?
We're all, we go back.
So, we are.
They know exactly what I'm saying.
We are under a comment, uh, public comment, so.
Okay.
Well, I have a few more questions here.
Well, go ahead.
I guess I want to make sure I understand everything. You said your next meeting's April fifth, where's that at?
Here.
At the courthouse? What time?
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock?
You might want to check on that, I believe our meeting is April fifth.
I think April thirteenth is the Heartland Site Plan Review.
Oh, I had it written down. The site, site plan review is thirteenth to thirteenth, then?
I'm not sure.
First and third would be the commissioner meeting, which would be the fifth.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so. Sorry about that.
You're thinking it's the thirteenth?
Waiting for a meeting notice.
Okay, and before you leave, can you give me your name and number, phone number?
Yeah, Mark M. R.C. Raycraft, R.A.Y. C.R.A.F.T.
Okay, just about Ray Craft.
Raycraft, yep.
And your phone number? One-eight-nine-three?
Yep. Thank you, Jan.
No, I know that, I know that other people have had problems with the sound in my district, which is Wheeler Township. And that's the only one I knew of that had a little bit of problems with the sound. And, um, and, you know, once they're up, it's not like you can move them over. They move them someplace, they're stuck there. And that's why I'm wondering, and also there was a problem with the flickering, because certain days when the sun was out, and the, a fin would go around, there would be a flicker, and it would, you know, like if you're in your home, uh, your whole room would like flicker. And so, and some people, that bothered, and some of the people have bothered them, too, with that. So, I'm just kind of, and I haven't heard anything for a long time. Yours prob, you are the first person I've heard that there's a problem in your area. But one other comment that you made, you said there's a hundred and fifty wind turbines.
Well, between Pine River Coal and Polaris, roughly a hundred and fifty. They have that lubrication problem.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I was just curious.
Well, it's metal on metal is what's making the noise. I've been down to Breckenridge and talked to Dennis Towner.
So, how many is in Breck, how many is in Pine River?
Oh, what is there? There's twenty. That's, there's more than that.
It has to be more than that, because.
Yeah, there's more than that, I think it's sort of forty, something like that.
Okay, because I know they're on both sides of US twenty-seven, that's why.
There are twenty-seven in Pine River Township.
Twenty-seven?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, twenty-five.
Twenty-seven.
Okay, all right, well, needs, it looks like we need to look into some things.
Okay.
Thank you for addressing the commission.
Thanks, Chairman.
Anyone else want to make a public comment? If you'd like to.
So, as Mark mentioned, we, we've been talking about some of these issues, so appreciate you bringing light to it. First, wanted to bring up, I know that the turbines near Mark's home, we have worked with DTE and also GE to address that issue and have been kind of pushing them to take action. I know GE did create a, a case number for these turbines, so that they have acknowledged that there's something going on there and are addressing it with greasing it and looking into a, a different, more long-term solution. So, we have been working with them to kind of move forward and, and take action on solving that issue in particular. The other, probably more significant thing I would like to touch on is the, the sound issue, specifically as it related to the Polaris project. So, there were a particular family or, or I guess cluster of folks who had been complaining about some, some noise issues. And we had a third-party consultant go out to the area and spend, I think it was over seventy days onsite collecting sound for those turbines in that area. And we had found that we were still under the fifty-five decibel limit. But out of good faith, we had retrofitted the turbine blades to use what's called an LNTE blade, which is a low-noise trailing edge, which is just a little bit quieter than the existing blades that were on those turbines. So, it reduced the sound slightly, still under the, the limit. But I think one piece of literature that we put together to kind of summarize the report, which I think Mark provided, the sound study for Polaris, we put together a memo recently that talks about, the, the sound study itself captures not only the sounds from the turbines, but the sounds in the environment, so such as, you know, a lawnmower or a bird calling out and whatnot. And there are certain circumstances where it, it does go above that limit. But when we had our sound expert go through the audio, those instances were due to, you know, other things besides the turbines. And, and some of those examples that we call out in this memo, which we can certainly provide, shows that the turbines are off in those circumstances as well. So, we can certainly provide that if helpful. The, the Heartland Farms Project, which is the new proposed project, will have those low-noise trailing edge blades for all of the turbines. We are, we did provide sound studies for that project as well. We are in compliance with the noise limit. The, the, to Mark's point, the, the blades are bigger than they were in, in previous years. But regardless of, of that, they still will have to comply with that noise limit, you know, no matter what.
You think it's because they're making the blades out of some other material? That maybe that's why it's louder, or you just think it's?
No, so, so the noise limits haven't actually really changed to jury's point, because the noise limit is a decibel limit. So, regardless of the size of the turbine, you know, we need to be under the same amount. But the, one other thing I, I do want to add to Mark's point, it is totally unacceptable that someone can have an issue with drain tile or noise or anything and have it be unaddressed for that long. That puts us in a tough spot as a developer, because we, you know, forge a lot of these relationships with landowners, and then it's sold to a utility, and then they're left to manage it. So, because of conversations like this with, with Mark and others, we are being more adamant for this new Heartland project to formulate a new complaint resolution plan with the county that will allow for issues like this, whether it be drain tile or noise. Because all of these things, you know, are required with our contracts with the landowners and with the ordinance to be resolved if there is an issue. So, we are trying to break that out into more clear steps on, you know, who to contact at the county, how many days they have to respond, how many days the owner and operator has to respond to make sure that these issues are brought to resolution. Because there is frankly no excuse for having an, an issue set for two years with no response. So, we were, you know, appreciative of, of Mark raising that issue. And as he said, we've had these conversations for a few months now. So, we're trying to be as proactive as we can to alleviate this happening in the future.
The other issue I'd have, too, you said that you have paid for your own tile. Is there a way that he can, um, uh, give his money back, or does he have to sue to do that, or what is this?
I charged him for it, but I had to hire a contractor to come in and do the work. I charged him.
Okay.
They paid it.
Okay, that's good to know. So, well, I, you know, I think, I think it's gotten, the project's gotten so huge, that it's probably hard to kind of keep up with some of the issues that are out there.
Yeah, and it, it gets difficult once these projects become operational. They are with the utilities and not Inven Energy. But we want to do what we can to make sure the right thing happens.
I, I do think you guys are doing a good job. I think that, you know, you are here, you're visible in the community, and I just think that you're doing a good job, too. And so, but, you know, I feel bad for anybody that, you know, it's a, you know, everyday issue for them to have to put up with.
Absolutely. One other thing I wanted to mention that, you know, kind of goes above and beyond previous projects in order to address these concerns. With the approval for the special use that occurred last week with the county planning commission, they had added a condition that commits us to a post-construction sound study. So that we can, you know, before and also after, once it is actually constructed, we will be committed to make sure, again, that we are still below the sound limit set by the ordinance.
All righty, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Just curious, would, would you guys say that five years into a wind farm, that there's going to be five percent problem? And then ten years in, ten percent problems? Like, would you say, obviously, everything that ages, there's problems? Like, what, how bad is, how bad, like, uh, you know, ten years in? How, how many turbines are going to have?
That's a good question, I don't think we have a, a concrete answer to that. But I will say that the lifespan of these turbines is up to forty years. They are built and tested by manufacturers such to withstand and, you know, be operational for very long periods of time, such as forty years. With that being said, you know, no project is going to be perfect, no matter what kind of project it is. But that's why we have, A, the, the complaint resolution plan that will be in place for the lifetime of the project. And we will have, the, the folks on the operations team will be out there in the field and can address these things as, as they come up.
Yeah, I would just echo the, the operations folks and the importance of that. I mean, like any big piece of equipment, a combine or anything else, it will have routine repairs. And driving around Gresham County, more often than not, you'll see a turbine or two that's not spinning for either a routine check-in maintenance, or, you know, there are things that need to be addressed. So, I don't think there will ever be a time where there is a percentage, a substantial percentage of the fleet of turbines that is, you know, not spinning for a long period of time or has issues. That's not to say that things won't come up that will need to be addressed throughout the project.
So, if, if a specific turbine is not meeting required ordinances, it is shut down until it's repaired?
Yep.
Okay.
All righty, thank you for addressing the commission. And keep us posted on those reports you mentioned and.
Yeah, we, we have a copy here if you would like it. It's just a, just kind of overview of what you're looking at, and Mark handed out, so that's helpful.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, next.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, next up is the consent calendar. Anybody want to pull anything out of that?
Accept the consent calendar?
Motion by Commissioner Lemberman to accept the consent calendar. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bunty, any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, nay? All right. Commissioner. We're up to Tracy.
Hello, everybody. I will touch on or update you on three much discussed topics, but I want to keep you updated. First, the light program. We, we'll get started with year two of this program next month. This corresponds with the beginning of the township's fiscal year. I previously mentioned to you that we have the four participants from last year committing to the program again this year. You're also aware that the village of Ashley has asked to participate, and they secured funding for that from you, I think at the, the last meeting. I also heard today that New Haven Township, the board out there, has voted and is asking to participate as well. So, as predicted, word has gotten out about the program that went well in the first year, and interest has grown. So, it's a great feeling that to have run a good program, kudos to the folks over in the Department of Community Development. And this really is a wonderful social support community, so very proud of that. Next, ARP, American Rescue Plan Act funds. The funding requests are coming in fast and furious now from townships and villages. And there will be at least two requests, probably more, on the April fifth agenda. If you didn't notice it come in or haven't had a chance to take a look at it, I'd like to highlight the, point you in the direction of the memorandum that I sent you last week that listed some ARP requests that I anticipate coming in or have come in, but they have not yet heard. I, I also listed projects that benefit our county facilities and operations that I want to get in front of you. These projects were not eligible for ARP funds under the interim rule, and so we didn't have them on a list and in front of you, all of them. But they are, they are eligible under the final rule. So, hoping that you'll take another look at that list and, the bottom line, though, is that as these projects are developed, I'm going to bring them to you for ARP funding consideration. And you may be in a position that you might never thought you'd be in, and that is having to say no or having to do some prioritizing. It's amazing how fast money can go when you're funding a variety of really good projects in the community. So, take a look at that, uh, that memo, and please direct any questions to me that you might have. Finally, the classification compensation study. The period for receiving proposals for these services closed on March first. I believe I had mentioned that to you previously. We have now put together a work group to do an initial review and a score of each of the proposals. I wanted to involve both folks on kind of the county operations side, but also on the court side. And the work group is prized of Commissioner Bunty, who has very cheerfully agreed to participate, our HR officer Sheila Barnaby, and myself. On the court side, we have Jennifer Wood and Charlie Perkins. The group met last week to get organized on dissemination of materials. We're going to be meeting again this Thursday to share preliminary scores. So, that is moving along, and we expect to have something in front of you soon. How's that for, not a committed timeline, but soon. This project is a high priority, the district court is especially anxious to have a good look at the staff over there. So, we want to honor the needs of all the workforce and, and prioritize that project. So, I am under, work is underway on the request qualifications document for what I'm calling a project advisor for broadband. This was approved by you at your last meeting. I'm very close to having a draft that I can send out to some people for, for feedback, because I have real gaps in some areas of my understanding that I, I think need to be filled in and a part of the document, so. And finally, the, some department reports are attached there for your review again this month. And beyond that, we're just engaged every day in operational issues here in the county and things overall going quite well. That's the conclusion of my report.
Any questions for Tracy?
Tracy, at the, at our, our next meeting, could you look into complaints about windmills? And could you just tell us a little bit about what the process is for the county and how they're channeled through the county, and, you know, who's handling that?
If you would like to hear from me now, Commissioner Lemberman, I can provide you some information. Would you like that now, or would you like that next meeting?
Uh, why don't we do it next meeting when all five of us will be here?
Very good.
All righty, any other questions?
I, if you, Tracy, I know you're busy, but maybe even make us an outline that we can kind of have for the future, exactly what the process is for the wind turbines. You know, for complaints.
For complaints, yeah, it, it's, it's on the website, it's all there. So, I'll have staff pull together a picture or something for you.
Okay, thanks, okay, thank you.
All righty, next, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Lemberman?
I was, uh, at the Ithaca Senior Center today, and I handed a, uh, a false check or a prop check over to the City of Ithaca for the eighty thousand for the pickleball courts. So, so there was a, a photo for that that I think is going to be in the Herald. And the only other thing that I would have to say is that, at the Arcade Township meeting last Wednesday, I was surprised, I, I, this was the first budget meeting that I can remember sitting at through, and I was surprised how tight the township budget is. I was surprised at how fast the cost of road maintenance is rising. And, uh, they're, they're somewhat in a, almost on a triage basis, you know? In, in other words, there used to be a schedule that they would do of roads that would be gravelled, roads that would be seal-coated. And now they're, they're reducing their road efforts, reducing their road efforts quite a bit. So, and I've, I've heard that there's other townships that may not even do any gravel at all this year. Gravel is up, you know, roughly twelve percent. So, and that's the, the county, the township share of it. So, it's just interesting to me. Probably all the different townships are, are feeling that. That's all I got.
All righty, thank you. I don't have anything, Jan.
Yes, I was at the Wheeler Township meeting, and same thing, they were going over their budget and trying to decide what they were going to do for this next year. and trying to decide what they were going to do for this next year. Lot of unknowns on a lot of things. And I was also at the RESD, was that this, that was between the two meetings, wasn't it? Yeah, at the RESD meeting. We're, our administrator did a good job on explaining. And also Chris, our, our financial guy, explained to several of what could be done or what money could be used for. And I think that was a real big help. There wasn't a lot of people there, but the people that were there were so interested and had a lot of questions and concerns, and I thought it went really well. So, and the meeting was not very long and anyway, it was all attended to. So that's pretty much it.
Alrighty, thank you. Let's move on to new business. And vets are up first, Nancy.
Hi, how is everyone today?
Good.
I will make this short and sweet. First thing on the agenda is we have three new committee members that we'd like you guys to approve for our vet committee. We had three openings this past year, four months. One with passing of one of our members and then the other two had some failing health. So we're replacing them with the recommendations on your letter of the three, which is Adam Leonard, who's a Gulf War vet, Terry Barnaby, who's Vietnam, and Brandon Simmett, Simmett from Gulf War. So if you guys would like to approve that, that would be.
Alrighty, two quick things. I want to say congratulations on getting some Gulf War vets in there. Now we got to work on the next group too. And the last one there on Simmett, that should be April 30th as the end date, not April 20th as it's typed here.
Yes, that's an error. Thank you.
So that should be in the motion. So I think we're, anyone have any questions on these? And we're looking for a motion to approve these three appointments.
I'll make a motion that we approve three.
Motion by Commissioner Bunting is a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Lerman. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion passed.
Thank you. Now, I'm just going to give you a really quick overview. What I'm trying to do is bring your attention to what we're doing in the office. It's going to be almost a year already that I've been in the position, aye? So I just wanted to kind of show you, since we're coming out of the COVID, whatever you want to call it, and moving into like maybe the new normal stuff, I just wanted to show you how our office is kind of running and try to give you, get your arms around, how many vets do we have in our county? And how many are we actually serving? And what are our accomplishments when we do serve them, okay? But the first thing we're doing is a promotional that when we go out to do our community events, we'd like to show this promotion. So Matt's going to help me get it up there. And it's only like 90 seconds. Matt, if you can turn it up. Or not?
Unfortunately, I think that's as far as we're going to be able to get it.
Okay, thanks.
So do you have your own YouTube page?
We're using Grasset County and this is going to go on the webpage when we redesign our section of the community or the county. We're also going to use parts of this in our next advertising sequence of, you know, we're looking at our budget to see if we can afford it, but putting these on like when you're going and pumping your gas and you got those screens and those TVs and stuff like that. So these will be like a 15 second type thing versus this whole 90 seconds. But when we go out to the community and we're actually presenting to our veterans, like I want to go to the prisons because 50% of the guards out there are veterans. So they can't take time off of work to come, so we're going to go to them. We're going to show them what we do to help them get their benefits and stuff. So that's the whole point of this is gives you that that pull, if you will, that tickler, if you will, to say, yes, I understand what you do and now how you can help me. So that's kind of what that's all about. Okay.
So like if you do that, like a video like that at the gas stations and stuff, is there a cost to you to do that?
Yes, a very big cost.
A very big.
Yeah, like right now, it's about $4,100 if I want to do it.
Annually? $4,100?
Well, no, I take that back. It's not annually. It's like for one month.
Wow.
Yeah, that's what I'm like, uh huh, is it worth it? You know, I'm trying to weigh my, what's more important this year and see, maybe down the road we do that or whatever. So it's a lot.
Yeah.
It's a lot. So what I want to show you here is this is a snapshot in time for our first quarter. We're on the fiscal year, like from September to, I'm sorry, October to September. So what this is telling you is we had 112 open claims at this snapshot that we did. And out of those 112, 32 of them are new. And 13 of them are waiting on Sue and I to do something with them, whether it's research or whatever we need to do to collect. 46 of that is the clients. We're waiting on the client to have appointments or whatever and stuff. And then we're waiting on 26 of those for the VA to actually make a decision to know whether or not we need to appeal it or whether or not we congratulate them and they move on with their lives. And then the other ones are the appeal. So there's 27 of them. So those are where we are on the first quarter and that's kind of a snapshot, okay? And I think that's important to know because we have about 2,500 veterans in this county, give or take. Out of those 2,500 veterans, we have about 1,600 right now that we actually have a record on. But I haven't been able to get through all those records. I've gotten through probably about 75% of them to make sure nobody's fallen through the cracks when we are all had to disperse. So that's what we're still working through on this. So these numbers are going to change as we go through those quarters. By the end of the fourth quarter, though, we should have everybody, you know, our arms wrapped around this whole process, know exactly where we are with everybody and then trying to recruit new claims and stuff for people, okay? This, I wanted to show you that in that first quarter, though, we closed 17 claims. And out of those 17 claims, we got eight approvals, six denials and three where just, there was no real decision, you know, it was, and it didn't matter because it wasn't that type of claim where there was an actual monetary. We did 943 personal interviews, file reviews and status checks. So that's quite a bit for, and that's all part of our file review piece. And then our support services, I think that's very important. If you look down there in the two asterisk, it's the trust fund, the soldier and sailor relief fund, community or county burial benefits, camp VA and health benefits, and the certificate of eligibility. So those are the type of support services that we do all the time. And then our self-service station, when we redid our offices, now we have a self-service station. A lot of things with the VA are going online. A lot of our older generation does not like to do anything online. So they'll come into our office and then we'll help them through everything that they need to. We're also having hearings in our office. So instead of people having to drive all the way down to Detroit, they just come into our, our office and then we can help them through the hearing. And I think it makes them feel a lot more comfortable because usually they get that 10 minute call before this hearing starts and maybe a 10 minute call two days before. And you can tell that the older generation is a little bit nervous and they don't know exactly what to do. So with us being there, it's great. Our outreach program, we're going to talk a little bit more about this in a minute, but we've developed a program which is a community outreach committee. And our goal is to have one outreach program per quarter. We're hoping to gain more as we go along. We'll talk about that in a second. Our social media, though, is working. We have an average of about 1,500 tags and we're getting Instagram, which is one per month, which is pretty good because that's telling us that we're getting the younger generation. That's who we're targeting right now. This is how much money we've given out in the first quarter in the programs that we gave it out to, so roughly $1,200 for the first quarter. Now here's the community outreach committee I was talking about. So we did all the post commanders together from the county. And we're all working together and now we've brought in some nonprofit groups as well as part of our committee. And these are quarterly outreach events. We have the Veterans Breakfast back in November that was at the Elks Hall, which was a great success. We had at least eight new veterans come to us and actually make an appointment and have new claims and so forth. So it worked. I mean, even if we get one, to me, that's a victory. Second quarter, we've been doing a monthly breakfast with one of the nonprofit groups. The first Monday of the month, so if any of you, everyone who attend, please stop by. It's from nine to 11 at the M46 Tabernacle. And it's growing each day. On the third quarter, we're going to have a flag day because that's our all wars memorial will be done with the lights and with some landscaping. So it's going to be kind of a, hey, look at this. It's, it's new and approved. And we're going to have the flag day out there and I think it's going to be a great event. And then the fourth quarter will be the county fair. And Tracy actually gave me the idea about providing services along with our booth. So she was talking about in Portland, they had this big fair for the veterans where they had haircuts and pro bono lawyers there and so forth. So we thought with our nonprofit groups that are part of our committee, that maybe we can bring some of those services during the county fair and bring in veterans that way as well. So we're working on the plan for that. Some other significant items, like we talked about the all wars memorial lighting project will be on its way. It's going to start in April and with backup dates in May. The action plan, all of the VA has these veterans centers that are affiliated with the Veterans Administration. We don't have one in Grasset County, so we wanted to get one for ourselves. It's not going to be affiliated with the VA per se, so we can't call it a vet center, but it's going to be an informal veterans recreational center or something of that nature. We're still working out the action plan for it. But we already have a possible location. We already have a pro bono lawyer. We have a claims specialist. And we have a psychologist that are doing pro bono. So we're trying to get a nice, safe, relaxing environment for our veterans to come together. And then we have started a partnership with Montcalm County for our transportation plan. That was one of our big concerns with the vet committee was transportation. Aging, can't do it where we need them to go. It goes out to Ann Arbor and Jackson and all those places where vets need to go. So we have teamed up with Montcalm County and we are working a contract with them to get that. We did a test run with one of our veterans. It worked out perfectly. So we're hoping that that's going to be a very successful partnership. So that is what I wanted to brief you on today. I know that was super fast, but I wanted to, I know there's some time restrictions today and I wanted to make sure that you guys know that this is what we're doing and you're getting your money's worth, I hope. So there you go. Do you have any questions for me? That wasn't a very eloquent way of ending that, but. Any questions?
Keep up the good work.
Okay. I appreciate your time. Matt, thank you for your assistance. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, got a chiller replacement. Who's handling that? Tony?
Yeah, I'll be handling that.
Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. This was firework capital improvement plan. We started by replacing the two big units on top of the connector building last year. And now we're moving forward, trying to get approval to replace that chiller unit. It cools the historic part of the courthouse and it's located basically right behind where you're sitting, out by the dumpster. It's a 30 ton chiller unit. We've got, we received four estimates on it. It's a little over what we had originally budgeted, but with the cost of everything rising, we're struggling with inflation, but.
Were the bids shocking because it's a lot over the budget?
I was very, very, very surprised and I've been working with Aaron Wasek from Spicers. He was the one that kind of coached me through what kind of numbers we should be looking at. But this capital improvement plan was put in prior. You know, that gets approved before, you know, at the end of the fiscal year, so. I did not put a recommendation in with this packet that you guys all saw. I wanted to spend additional time looking at references and talking to some of these people. All four of these contractors were very highly recommended. If I guess why, if you need a recommendation from me, I would say go with the lowest bid. Yeah, I don't, do you have any questions? Am I missing something, Tracy?
No, I think that you know, at the time that these materials needed to be presented for the packet, Tony had contacted the references for the fellow on the low bid, but was having some trouble getting those folks to respond. I mean, that's not the fault of the, of the vendor. But in the interim, Tony was able to get, was able to have some conversations with a couple of folks, I mean, good references given the, you know, their jobs and the contact with this individual. And in speaking with Tony earlier today, he said he certainly has, you know, the confidence based on those references in going with that. So, you know, it's still well above what was in the capital improvement plan, which indeed was formulated last summer and approved by you in, you know, August or September. And we know that a lot of things have changed. So, so the project itself has been approved by you and I had kind of focused you in this way with another project. What we're really needing from you tonight is approval of this particular vendor. And because it is above the amount you had approved in the capital improvement plan, also approval of the, the cost.
And Tony, you're satisfied with this low bid?
I am.
Okay, great. And I think I'm afraid we're going to have to get used to these crazy increase in prices. It's, it's coming.
It's really fluctuating right now. I, I just heard the other day, OSB prices are back up to $42, $44 a sheet for half inch OSB plywood, basically.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, any questions for Tony?
I guess my only question is can we do this in one motion that we just accept the low bid? If so, I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Lerman. I need a second.
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion passed. Thank you, Tony.
Yep.
Alright, next. I have a point, I want to appoint the, as printed, the German Exchange Committee, Brandon Kelly, Casey Zinner, Stacy, Carrie Jenkins, Paul Hungerford and Jan Bunting. And without objections, I'd like to make those appointments.
I'll make a motion that we make these appointments.
A motion by Commissioner Bunting, second. Yep, second by Commissioner Lerman. Any discussion?
The, the only discussion, the only question I have is this German partnership committee, there's no budget for it, correct? We're not, okay.
I think they're handling it.
Yeah, everybody, I mean, usually the whole community, the whole county, usually people don't need to.
Yeah, the way I understand, this committee is going to handle everything. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay? Motion passed. Alrighty. Business. Why don't we look for a motion to go and, I understand our closed session is available. Why don't we try to get through the rest of the agenda and then we can move on to it? And we need a motion to move into the finance meeting.
I move, I make the motion that we go to the finance meeting.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Lerman, a second. All right, motion by Commissioner Lemberman, a second?
I'm thinking.
You're thinking. In thinking for a second. Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All right, then we're adjourned and John, go ahead.
All right, well, go ahead.
All right, sounds good. I almost got cut tonight, it sounds like. I'm gonna go ahead and start by going over my finance director's March report. First up, just wanna update you again on the audit. We still have auditors working on the approved project to balance the delinquent tax revolving fund years that was, the last meeting was approved. We were unable to close our books until that is done and we can't issue our report until our books are closed. So Terry and I were working on that this afternoon, still progressing. Update on our drain prepayments. Yes, sir.
Chris, can I, I didn't read the last line on here. Looks like the lawyers on our closed session wanna go ahead with that. So without objection, can we move to the closed session?
Yes.
No?
I, I'm.
I'm assuming by the hour, aren't you?
Motion to go to the closed session?
This is what we wanna do, Tracy? Go ahead with the closed session or you think we can quickly go through the, go ahead.
We do have the attorneys waiting. We've been trying to give them an idea of when we might get to this. We're running a little bit behind on the timeline we had given them. So I had suggested perhaps that you could go into closed session prior to beginning the finance committee meeting. I don't know how much, I mean, we have started the finance committee meeting at this point. I don't know how much Chris has to present to you. If you do go into closed meeting, closed session, we'll of course need to clear the meeting room of all folks except for the sheriff.
Good. Chris, is it something, you think we can get through this in maybe 10 minutes or so or?
Yeah, I do.
Okay, well, if that's okay, why don't we do that then?
Hopefully Laura was and Melanie have heard that and know that we're gonna get to you here very quickly. Thank you, John.
All right, so back at it. Drain prepayments for the year have totaled $168,000 so far. I was just wanna point out that a typical year where we would pay just our annual loan payments used to run somewhere in the neighborhood of $200 to $225,000 for the year. And now we are able to prepay our entire amount rather than going to debt for each of the drain, each of the drain work that's being done every year. Item number three, the state revenue sharing, this is something that I was able to attend a seminar down in Lansing a week and a half ago. And we're updated that due to the 2020 census, the drop in the population in Grasset County, the state's gonna be adjusting our state revenue sharing for our current fiscal year. And for some counties, there's actually going to be a clawback where the counties have to pay back to the state, some of the state revenue sharing because the amount that we get is based on our population and our population did go down. The final numbers have not been released yet, but we were just warned that it is going to be coming. The state of Michigan has created a program and it currently has $50 million in funding in it to help make up for the $43 million that they are clawing back. So if everything goes as is expected, we will not have any type of financial impact from this. I just want to let you know real quick that state revenue sharing is made up of two pieces. 80% of it comes from a small portion of the sales tax. About 20% of it is appropriated by the state. Update on our OPEB balance since the beginning of the calendar year, January 1st, we are down 6.5% on the calendar year. As a benchmark to compare to, as of time of this report, the S and P was down just over 11%. So again, MERS is beating the market rates. However, we will, we are seeing declines in our OPEB trust fund investments. I've updated our ARP funds and project list. Unfortunately, the title up here, I did not update. So if you looked at it in detail, these carried over from the prior month and I apologize, but numbers at the bottom here are fresh. $7.8 million award. We've earmarked 4.5 million of that or 57%. We put 1.5 of our remaining balance in a reserve, which leaves us with $1.87 million and that is not yet earmarked or reserved. Without any questions, I'm gonna jump to our cash balances for the end of February. Our general fund had a minimal decline. Each of our funds' cash balances basically fell right into the patterns that we see in previous years. Without any questions, I will jump to our check register and if I go too fast, just interrupt me. I'll give you a moment or two until Commissioner Lemberman tells me that we can move on to our revenue and expenditure reports.
I think we could move right past unless there's something you saw in the check register that maybe, you know, jumped out at you, Chris.
I did not.
Go ahead.
Our expenditure and revenue reports for the end of February 2022. Next month, we will get, I'll get into a more detailed review of this as we will be 50% of the way through our fiscal year. So I'm not gonna get into anything in detail in here. This is for your review. If you have any questions, feel free to call me, email me. I'm always available. And the latest item or the last item that I have to present, which is out of order, I just presented B3. C1 and C2 are from, for the treasure. I don't think the treasure is online right now, so if it's okay.
She's right here.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry, Terry.
Up here for the mic, if you could.
Wasn't, wasn't paying attention to what Chris was saying. Are we just on the reports that I?
Just your reports.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions with any, any of them this month?
None.
Can't tell if they're looking or.
I don't have anything.
Okay, Jan?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, I'll take my last two minutes here to go over a quick memo from the Grasset County Central Dispatch. I was asked to speak with the 911 Director Dan Morden with, who entered into an agreement with Motorola to replace the radio console out at 911 back in December of 2020. Now this has been replaced and he entered into a a lease agreement, which is, it is actually more like a loan than a lease for $638,000 to get this replaced. The first payment is due in December 1st of 2022. So I reached out to him to make sure that Central Dispatch would indeed be able to make this first payment. When this was approved, there was not a specific plan in place to make these lease payments. In this memo, which you can read in detail or you have written detail, it talks about how the first payment will be able to be made from cash, the cash balance that is held by Central Dispatch. I did verify the cash balance and as of last week, they did have $552,000 in cash balance to make the first $323,000 payment. The second payment is due next year, December 1st, 2023. And that second payment is $315,000. If Central Dispatch does not have the cash reserves to make that payment, they're going to seek financial, or financing from local or other financial institutions. And they've already had conversations with Commercial Bank and Ithaca and they do have a good track record with several other lending agencies. So I found that to be a very positive update from Director Morden and I hope that the board finds that as positive also. The plan is coming together. And that is what I have for you. And we did make it within our allotted 10 minutes for a finance meeting.
Yeah, great.
Questions for Chris?
No, I guess we're all set, so.
Do we need a motion to adjourn and?
Yes. Are you making that motion?
Yeah, I'll make that.
Motion by, oh, let me make that motion to go back to regular session.
Wait to see what was gonna happen.
Thank you, Jan. Well, no, you're still, you've still got the gavel.
Okay, all those, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, we're out of the finance committee meeting.
Okay, and then any other public comment? Cause we're gonna be going into closed session. Oh, we need a motion to pay the bills.
I move, we pay the bills.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I'll second that.
Alrighty, any further discussion? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, nay? Motion passed. Okay, any, any further public comment? Then we need a motion to go into closed session. So, and do we need to say a reason?
Do we need to say?
Connection pending litigation.
That's correct. And the, the language is on the agenda. So you could simply in, say that you're including the language on the agenda in your motion or something.
Okay, we're looking for a motion on the language in item O.
This, so this piece of paper?
No.
I'll fix.
Not yet. We have a motion, Angie?
Okay, so.
Closed session.
I'll make that motion.
All right, we need a second? Second by Commissioner Bunting. Any discussion? All those in favor, aye?